This is an omnibus motion because this message requires action on the part of NGO through an ordinance by the CNIAN or through an executive order by the City Mayor. So, the CNIAN might enact ordinance to support this message or the mayor can issue just an executive order relating to this. And I can also refer this to the Committee on Laws and Styles by Honorable Lau to coordinate with the Committee of Aspiramiro for the enactment of the ordinance, omnibus motion. The two committees will be involved: the Committee on Public Transportation of Honorable Aspiramiro and Committee on Laws and Styles by Honorable Daniel Lau, omnibus motion.
We noted with the Chair that two committees is involved in this particular concern: the Committee on Laws and the Committee on Public Utilities, noted with the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Number 8. Trust fund trial balance, little statement in place of position, a statement cast close, these copies are readily available at the office of the Secretary of the CNIAN, omnibus motion, and may be available upon demand. In the meantime, this trial fund balance, we just, I recommend that it would be just duly noted and recorded, City Council, omnibus motion.
Manifested by the Honorable Majority of the Floor Leader that item number 8 on the trust fund trial balances and other statements, we just be duly noted.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The annual committee reports submitted on item number 8, we proceed to item number 9, literacy and assigned business whereby we have 14 appropriations, omnibus motion, and may I begin with the first appropriation? Our resolution funding various dependent positions in the City Government of Osamese. And number 2, resolution defunding various upper positions to fund the creation of new positions and funding of needed dependent positions in City Government of Osamese. And number 3, ordinance creating new plantilla positions of the City Government of Osamese. Copies of these items, 1, 2, and 3 are pronounced to its members as body. And I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service, Honorable Lord Lieutenant Sepris, to introduce an incumbent action on these three items omnibusly, omnibus motion.
The Honorable Lord Lieutenant Sepris is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and to our presiding officer. I move to pass omnibusly this two resolution and one ordinance: a resolution funding various defended positions of the City Government of Osamese and a resolution defunding various unfilled vacant positions to fund the creation of new positions and funding of needed defunded positions in the City Government of Osamese. And the ordinance is an ordinance creating new plantilla position of the City Government of Osamese. For first reading, Madam Chair, with reservations.
For first reading, with reservations, motion approved.
Due to the urgent demand and in the interest of public service, I so move this omnibusly for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request, resolution, a resolution funding various defunding positions of the City Government of Osamese and a resolution defunding various unfilled positions, vacant positions to fund the creation of new positions and funding of needed defunded positions in the City Government of Osamese and an ordinance for the creation of new plantilla positions of the City Government of Osamese. Move with the Honorable Majority of the Floor Leader that this be passed on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing non-motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriation number 4, resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry Emmanuel Junior, to enter and sign on behalf of San City the non-disclosure agreement with the National Bureau of Investigation for the setup of NBI clearance center station in the city. Honorable Chair, I move for approval on the first reading with reservations.
This request resolution has been moved with the Honorable Majority of the Floor Leader for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, due to the urgent public interest to facilitate the opening of an NBI clearance center station in the City of Osamese, I move, did motion to approve this resolution on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules, omnibus motion.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Majority of the Floor Leader is passing this request on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry Emmanuel Junior, to enter and sign on behalf of the San City the non-disclosure agreement in DA with the National Bureau of Investigation or NBI for the setup of NBI clearance center station in Osame City. Move for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriation number 5, resolution authorizing Assistant Officer Dr. Maria Florilin Di Ero Queiroz to enter into and sign on behalf of San City the non-disclosure statement with the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation for face health consult package and TB dot clinic accreditation. And I yield to Chairman of the Committee on Public Health and Sanitation, Honorable Catherine Silim, to introduce an incumbent action on this item, omnibus motion.
The Honorable Lim is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution on joint motion authorizing the City Health Officer Doctor Maria Florilin Di Ero Queiroz to enter and sign on behalf of Osame City the non-disclosure agreement with the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation for field health consulta package and TB dot's clinic accreditation for first reading with reservations.
For first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to its urgency and public demand, I would like to pass this resolution for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Lim is passing this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing non-motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriation number 6, a resolution approving the 2024 Commercial Livestock and poultry survey on 20 to 30 March 2024 by PSE Provincial Office in San City. I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Agriculture, Honorable San Yominal Junior, to introduce an incumbent action on this item, omnibus motion.
The Honorable San Yominal is now recognized for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority of the Floor Leader. Good afternoon, everyone. This humble representation would like to move a resolution approving the 2024 Commercial Livestock and poultry survey on 20 to 30 March 2024 by PSE Provincial Office in Osame City. Be passed on first reading on joint motion, Madam Chair, with reservations.
Move on first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, considering the urgency and in the spirit of public service, me I therefore move that this be approved on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules of this CNIAN. Thank you.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Yominal is passing this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing non-motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriation number 7, a resolution approving the lecture activity pertaining to the awareness campaign to end violence against women on 22 March 2024 by the Port Management Office of Osamese Occidental, Osamese in San City. I again yield to the Chairman of the Committee on Social Services, Community Development, Women, Childs and Family Welfare, Honorable San Yominal Junior, to introduce an incumbent action on this item, omnibus motion.
The Honorable San Yominal is now again recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Majority of the Floor Leader. This representation would like to move a resolution approving the lecture activity pertaining to the awareness campaign to end violence against women on 22 March 2024 by the Port Management Office of Osamese Occidental, Osamese in Osame City. Be approved on first reading on joint motion, Madam Chair, with reservations.
Move for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, due to its urgency and public demand, I so move for the approval of this on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules of this CNIAN.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, a resolution approving the lecture activity pertaining to the awareness campaign to end violence against women on March 20 to 2024 by the Port Management Office of Osamese Occidental, Osamese in Osame City. Move for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing non-motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriation number 8, a resolution approving the Logistics 101 Seminar on 26 March 2024 by Department of Trade and Industry, Provincial Office in San City. And I yield to the Chairman of the Committee on Trade, Commerce, and Industry, Honorable Catherine Silim, to introduce an incumbent action on this item, omnibus motion.
The Honorable San Yominal is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion. Catherine Silim, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution on joint motion approving the Logistics 101 Seminar on 26 March 2024 by the Department of Trade and Industry Provincial Office in Osame City for first reading with reservations.
For first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to its urgency, I would like to pass this on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Lim is passing this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. A resolution approving the Logistics 101 Seminar on March 26, 2024 by Department of Trade and Industry Provincial Office in Osame City. Motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing non-motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriation number 9, a resolution approving the training in shielded metal arc welding in CI by the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology of Osamese in San City. I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Education, Honorable Cecil Yoko, to introduce an incumbent action on this item, omnibus motion.
The Honorable Ko is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority of the Floor Leader. I move to pass a resolution approving the training in shielded metal arc welding or ESMAO NC1 by the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology of Osamese in Osame City for first reading with reservations.
Move for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the interest of the public, particularly the students inside the Bureau, I move to pass this resolution, approving resolution on the training of ESMAO NC1 by the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology in Osame City for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Move with the Honorable Cecil Yoko to pass this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. This resolution approving the training in shielded metal arc welding in CI by the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology of Osamese in Osame City. Move for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing non-motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriations number 10, 11, and 12 are various infrastructure projects, namely construction of chicken multiplier building at Barangay Kinuman, the investment of public mall roofing at Barangay Santa Cruz, San City, and third, the concreting of Gango barang road at Porok 7 Maligus Street, Barangay Gango, San City. With absence of the Chairman of the Committee on Public Works, Honorable Salo Sablo is on leave, I now yield to the Co-Chairman, Honorable Catherine Silim, to introduce an incumbent action on these three items, 10, 11, and 12, omnibus motion.
Honorable Lim is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass an omnibus motion, three items, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a contract for the construction of chicken multiplier building at Barangay Kinuman Norte, San City and perform all acts for the implementation of the project funded from the construction, repair, improvement of government-owned buildings program of the 20% development fund of 2024. Second, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a contract for the replacement of the public mall roofing at Barangay Santa Cruz, Osame City and perform all acts for the implementation of the project funded from the construction, repair, improvement of the government-owned buildings program of the 20% development fund of 2024. Lastly, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a contract for the concreting of Gango Barangay Road at Porok 7 Maligus Street, Barangay Gango, San City and perform all acts for the implementation of the project funded from reconstruction and/or rehabilitation and/or widening of local barangay roads, bridges, spillways, and drainage system program of the 20% development fund of 2024 for first reading with reservations.
Move for first reading with reservations as being manifested by Honorable Lim, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to its urgency, I would like to pass this on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, Honorable Lim is passing this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Is there any comment, remarks, hearing non-motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriation number 13, a resolution approving the training in organic agricultural production institute from 20 March to 19 April 2024 by the Technology and Legal Learning Institute and Nature One, Oneis, Talino Incorporated in San City. And I yield to Chairman of the Committee on Education, Honorable Cecil Yoko, to introduce an incumbent action on this item, omnibus motion.
The Honorable Cecil Ko is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority of the Floor Leader. I move to pass a resolution approving the training in organic agriculture production NC2 level from March 20 to April 19, conducted by the Technology and Agricultural Learning Institute and Nature Oneness or Talino Incorporated in Osame City for first reading with reservations.
Move for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the benefit of the public who are interested in achieving or getting a certification level 2 on the organic agriculture production, I move to pass this resolution approving the said training for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Move on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Is there any comment, remarks, hearing non-motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The last, but not the least, appropriation number 14, an ordinance amending ordinance number 1257-233, creating the agricultural and biosystems engineering division under the Office of the City Mayor and funding of its corresponding engineer positions, engineer four agricultural and biosystems engineer, engineer one agricultural and biosystems engineer. Omnibus motion, and I yield to the Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service, Honorable Lord Lieutenant Sepris, to introduce an incumbent action on this item, omnibus motion.
Honorable Lord Lieutenant Sepris is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and to our presiding officer. I move to pass an ordinance amending ordinance number 1257-2023, creating the Agricultural and Biosystems Engineering Division under the Office of the City Mayor and funding of its corresponding engineer position. Position title engineer, engineer four and engineer one for first reading with reservations, Madam Chair.
Move for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Due to the need of this position, I move to pass this ordinance for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request, ordinance and ordinance amending ordinance number 1257-2023 that is creating the Agricultural and Biosystems Engineering Division under the Office of the City Mayor and funding of its corresponding engineer positions. Move with the Honorable Lord Lieutenant Sepris on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing non-motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are no pending matters on my table. On item number 10, business for third reading, at this juncture, may I have the privilege and pleasure to hear on business matters from Honorable D. Gisso, omnibus motion.
For business matters, the Honorable Gisso is now recognized by the Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We just finished our first series of continuing local legislative education program or the CLLEP of the Philippine Counselors League held last March 11/13/2024 at Boracay Island, Malayakland, Madam Chair. And we were, our venue was at Savoy Hotel, and we discussed topics related to tourism, agriculture, and food security, Madam Chair. That was last March 11/13/2024. And we will also be having another round of second series of our continuing local legislative education program or the CLLEP at El Nido Palawan this coming June, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
That would be on June, June, second or third quarter. We will still be waiting for the exact date, Madam Chair, on June. Okay, thank you for the information. Noted by the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. At this point of time, may I have the pleasure and privilege to hear on scheme matters from Honorable Gianpel Hélonsud, omnibus motion.
For scheme matters, Honorable Gianpel is now recognized.
Thank you, Majority of the Floor Leader and Madam Chair for scheme matters. I just want to inform that as of now, there are 33 barangays who are already changed their signatories at land bank, Madam Chair. That's all, thank you. And by the way, Madam Chair, 18 barangays pa ang wala pa naka-change signatory sa land bank due to the same reason, schedule gapon sa land bank and then mid-Jo, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Noted, Honorable Hélonsud.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. At this juncture, may I have the pleasure and privilege to hear on matters concerning the indigenous people, Honorable Bayrinda Batiyon, omnibus motion.
The Honorable Bayrinda Batiyon is now recognized by the Chair for matters concerning the indigenous people.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Majority of the Floor Leader. Madam Chair, I have two item. First, Madam Chair, barangay, na-install na nga mga IPMR sa barangay. Barangay Stenson Abordo, Manila Lindualing, as one, first term niya. Barangay Trigos, Marcelino Gumiimo, third term. Barangay Ginguna, Aristo Lumanga, third term, gehapon. Barangay Gimad, Gaspar Ginyasan, third term. Barangay Gala, Merna Marte, first term. Barangay Kinuman Sor, Filimon Makatulad, first term. Barangay Kugun, si Barangay Kugun naan na siya is CUC but as kapitan, wala pa daw siya budget kena-approve na last October, so wala pa daw siya kalinkod. Sa barangay Diguan, Felix Alduha, first term niya. Barangay Bungbong, Sierra Semino, first term. And barangay Labo, second term ni Madam Chair. Then, naaputain, approved na resolution nga kaming napod na iselection process sa barangay. Ang barangay Labo di ay is mahumay na ihihikaduak term, so maggrinyo napod siya, magselection process napod siya as third term. Dayon barangay pulot, approve resolution, so magselection process papod ang barangay pulot. So, ang barangay pulot, Titsonita Moriliya. Second, Madam Chair, nakuy nadawat nga invitation, charity galang. Nagkita sagpod na ako sa atuang, best akan ng agenda. So nakabutang siya diri, ako nalang i-focus ang para sa amoa as indigenous people. The Women's Center will be owned and turn over to the indigenous community, Subanin tribe, once completed. So, kami Madam Chair, mali pay, good guy, mi kunay mga project na moabot sa amoa. But, kanilang Madam Chair, manangip abot na ako diri, kaya wala man sagpod ko kaila nila, sakanin nagpadala, attorney Sanil Well, Talam Habines. So, wala, lalipay, good mi aning nga programa kung moabot man siya. But, kanilang Madam Chair, as IP mandator representative, na tayo na create na ordinance number 1083-17, an ordinance regulating the entry of different organization, NGOs, POS, migrants, and other entities to any barangays in Osame City within the domain, land of Subanin, for the purpose of negotiating, convincing ICCIPs their programs business, engaging in development of their forms of activities involving such indigenous people. So, ako alang Madam Chair, isip mandator representative, magagilang you to the process so as ka ng pre-frier inform consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Batiyon. I think you can keep in touch with Habines, that attorney, sila, attorney Habines.
Nakabutang diri Madam Chair, President of Organization Attorney Luel Talam Habines.
Habines, that is the daughter-in-law of Mrs. Tining Habines, the owner of flower shop. Roka Saban, Anitoto. Oh, Saban, Anitoto, oo. Okay.
Honorable Chair, in line with that, in our minutes of the recognition of February 27, 2024, we have an item and the important matters, the same organization, had written the mayor on February 20, 2024, expressing the intent to construct a women's center. One ilang project, women's center. Unila project, women's center, uh, for IP women members in Bagay Tipan, isis na po do, Osami City. Letter to the mayor, but it just a person it, uh, related by Honorable Batyon. Wala ma-balo ang IP, wala ma-balo ang siya mismo, wala ma-balo sa kaning organization, sa nga we- women. Uh, women.
Empowering women.
Women, empowering women Philippines, Incorporated Wave Philippines. So, kanilang activity, some, some thirty-one, ilan ipanreasing, uh, nine-hundred-ninety-eight, thirty-eight, four doors. Unya ang ilan project, money, ang women's center, ngailang, di paayas sila sila, kang mayor ato February twenty. Lastong minutes, atong resolution, sa February twenty-seven, ngaminis, Madam Chair. So, uh, as related by Honorable Batyon, this organization, Wave Philippines Incorporated should coordinate also with Honorable Batyon and IP members for public protocol, Madam Chair. And perhaps also with the NCIP, uh, chapter here, San City, Madam Chair. As public protocol, uh, with this, uh, undertaking to conduct a fundraising and to create a women's center in Bagay Tipan, uh, Incision Abordo, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
So, what's the pleasure of the Majority Floor Leader regarding this, uh, concern?
Some minutes, February twenty-seven, minutes, naa, letters sa mayor, intent, intent to, to construct women's center.
Provided that they will follow the necessary, uh, procedures. Invitation to join a charity gala, project. Is there any other comment from the women?
If the Indi Bor project, po da IP, uh, in, uh, San City, it should make connections, public protocol sa atong IP, yes, Honorable Batyon. Can a fundraising sila, okay, isang ko det. This is a fundraising for the IP, women's center. Na wala keblong, ang, uh, si Honorable Batyon.
Wala.
Honorable Batyon is representative of the IP, Subanin tribe, in Osamis. So, these peoples should learn public protocol, according to the NCIP and also with Honorable, Honorable Batyon, who represents the Subanin tribe in San City, Honorable Chair.
So, what's the pleasure now of the body?
Under, sinintiget, naninintiget. How many poche, the issue po'tin, naa sila eh, appear sagan pamilyon, per mas thirty-one. Na fundraising sila, maganeke blo si Batyon. Maganeke blo si NCIP. Na sila sila mayor, wala maganeke endorsement, mayor, sato ang, ako pindir, activity. So, they should learn public protocol, Madam Chair.
Yes. The only, um, note the members of the city council. So, is there any other comment from the, the members of the city council? Or Majority Floor Leader have manifested that in fact, uh, there was no endorsement from the office of the city mayor supposedly. They should get an endorsement or approval of the city mayor if ever they're going to conduct an activity. Okay, this is akuan, uh, sana, kanan na ang fundraising activity. Charity gala dinner at nine-hundred-ninety-eight per ticket. Well, do, maybe we just, uh, advise them to observe the necessary protocol.
Involve the community because it's fundraising. The event involve the science, business side of commerce for the support.
And they should get the necessary business permit?
Yes.
Oh. Well, um, the project is really very nice, no? May makaayang project, but anyhow, we really have to observe some protocols. Any other observations from the member of this house body? They have a very lovable project, but what is most important is they have to observe the necessary protocols in, in using this project. Any other comment? Di ko po buhay. For me, for me, the project is very lovable, but what is most important is they have to observe the necessary procedure in coming up with a project. Yes, good, that the Committee on Women is now having the voice, Honorable Cecil.
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for giving the floor to me. Um, uh, I would like to recommend the committee, Committee on, on Women and Social Services and with the Committee of, uh, Con, Relinda, Honorable Relinda Batyon to jointly, uh, contact the, the, this organization and clarify, uh, their intent and their clearances regarding the activity.
Yeah. Thank you for your manifestation, Honorable Ako. So, manifested by the Honorable Ko that the Committee on Women, Honorable Wominal and the IPMR representative will, Committee on Women, oh, will make the necessary, kuanting ali, um, contact aninila, parang, once and for, okay, mag, mag, magkonya sila di to, nya wala pay, wala pay. We don't have any, I don't know if they have secured the really necessary permit.
No, sa ikotang numbers sila later.
Oo.
Five-two-one, zero-six-one-zero.
Okay.
So, parang annex, putro, putro di, putro.
The Chair would like to commission, Honorable Wominal, the Committee Chair on Women and the IPMR, IPM representative, uh, Honorable Batyon, that you should keep in touch with these people if necessary. Kaya, di pa may munga, di pa may balo, di pa may balo.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, noted, I'll check.
Okay, very good. Yes, Honorable Lim.
Madam Chair, good afternoon. I would like to inform you that, um, Attorney Luel Habines is in your office waiting for you, for the discussion. The officer of you, Attorney Habines, is outside. The president is in your office right now, yes.
Umit na ko.
Waiting at your office.
Is a month ago.
Attorney Habines, the president of you.
Uh, I would highly also request the presence of Honorable Wominal and Batyon if in case the subject matter would be this particular issue, non, this concern. Parang akoan, well, once and for all, uh, we can settle down. Okay, thank you for the information, Honorable Lim.
Malika ng ticket.
Huh?
Honorable Chair, if there are no more other important matters which my colleague may wish to bring forth before this house body, I am now bound to proceed with item number fifteen, Honorable Chair. Since I hear no more, I move to adjourn.